Okay, we will call the meeting to order. Do you have any minutes, no minutes?
We did actually have a minute, but I did. Chris had looked at them, did you have a chance to look at them?
Do we have them here? I didn't this past week.
Okay, then don't worry about it.
Okay, we'll do those, alright.
Send them to you again.
Yeah. Alright, and we have a real estate fiscal year 18 refund in the amount of $626.77. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, I just hang on, I always just check these to... Okay, I always just check these to be sure it isn't one of us, somebody has to accuse them of...
I might have a car one coming.
Okay, alright.
Probably not this soon.
Okay. Alright, no comments or questions, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's it, right? There isn't anything else?
I know you being clerk to you over there.
I am.
Okay, nope, just the one. Updates, the town hall elevator project. It looks like we really have to lean on them, I did call Mr. Lundberg today and leave a message that, you know, if we could get it in a week or two, that would be great.
Right.
I know they have the capacity to do it, I left in the message, I said if, you know, if I wanted to get them here, I'd have the DPW truck back into the pole that's closest there, and then they'd find the resources to send somebody up. But Keith just doesn't want to cooperate, you know?
No, I can talk to him about it.
Alright, I did say that in the message, I said, you know, come on, don't tell me you don't have the capacity. If we ranked a truck into one of the falls, you guys would be here, so let's try to do that.
Snowstorm, and then they won't have the capacity, so let's do it now.
Yeah. Because it does look like we won't be able to open it until that's hooked up, so...
Yeah.
I mean, all I saw was the email, I think you guys saw too, because I was out of town.
Well, there was some, I think I sent you an email about those... The, they have some plywood between floors, and they need to seal it somehow, and they were going to look into that.
Okay, I guess I missed that one.
Yeah, but hopefully that's minuscule if anything.
Okay, okay. And we did build some connoissements into the...
Right.
Into what we had, okay. Next is the town, special town meeting warrant, and I think at this point, we have finalized all of the articles. I guess I would just say, is everybody happy with the order? I was happy with the order.
That's fine.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Lisa corrected the part about the moratorium?
I did.
Yep. Okay, so we're ready to issue this, and it has to be out, I don't have...
This is the 27th?
27th, I think, to people, so we probably need to...
It has to be the printer sooner than that.
Does it go to the town clerk, or who mails it out?
Yeah, I mean, normally Mary arranges for that, to be honest.
Right.
So if it has to go out to them on the 27th, that's next Monday.
Yep. Which means it needs to be printed before then.
That's right.
And who, I'm not sure who does the printing either. Maybe Eloise knows?
Yeah, Eloise or Mary would know. I don't want to bother Mary.
You want us to check with them tomorrow?
That would be good, I'm gonna be in town on Wednesday, if you need, you know, if we need help in production, I'll be taking Wednesday and Friday off, so...
Okay.
But tomorrow I have...
You're not making any pies, then?
No, I'll be eating some in between, but it's a division of labor, you know? Everybody's a specialist. Okay, so then we should number the articles, because we're happy with that.
So basically just in order, right?
Just in order.
Check with Eloise tomorrow, and see where those...
Yeah, as I say, I'm around on Wednesday and Friday, so I can assist with whatever we need to, to get it out.
Okay.
Any other updates on that one?
Do we need to take a vote, or did we already do that?
There's notes in here to town council on that, that I'm going to remove.
Yep. We will have to, we will have to sign it, why, yes, why don't we take a vote while we're here, to approve this and to sign the final copy on production, alright?
Okay.
You can say so moved.
So moved.
Alright.
Second.
Alright. Any further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't see that we have any specific bill.
I didn't see anything.
Okay. And we have a letter that EPW asked us to send to the Boy Scouts about cleaning up some residual stuff that has been up on the top of the old fire station.
Right, you read it?
Yeah.
Okay, and it was okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so...
So, yes, exactly.
I think it goes to Mr. Pendergast, and we can probably just put it on a letterhead if we all agree that it's fine, and send it off.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
I wouldn't be surprised if it's already cleared up, because I didn't happen to see him at the wine tasting.
Okay.
So I'm guessing it may even already be addressed.
Cool.
Okay.
Alright.
Any selectmen updates, we might as well take care of those while we're waiting for the 7:15, and then we can get started, I think we can get started a couple minutes early with the...
Right, I did see...
You guys have everybody you're expecting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did talk to Asabet, there's a little something, if you'd like to take a look.
Okay.
I think the highlights were that the budget increase is 3.79, which is about $770,000 for our portion. The healthcare costs have increased 10 to 12 percent. The Berlin students have increased from 19 to 24.
Okay.
So that's five students.
Now, you didn't mean that $770,000 was our increase?
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's a total increase.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Just...
Yes, it's all in here.
Yeah. Is this, this isn't being sent out live?
And we're proving it tonight.
Several people just dropped in their living rooms there. Alright.
And they are maintaining a level-one status, which is very impressive.
Mm-hmm.
So, and this has all the other data.
Okay.
I haven't mentioned.
And what are the drivers, the primary drivers of the increase?
I think it was healthcare costs, and...
Yeah, okay.
There's a page on those. They do have an increase in student enrollment, not only in Berlin.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to keep appropriate class sizes, and maintain their athletic and extracurricular activities. I believe they added one psychologist.
Okay.
Yes, the whole, the operating budget is a $770,000 increase, and it's a 3.79 increase for the entire budget.
Okay.
Our portion is an estimate, which I believe is backed further in this, which, because we're up five kids, though, it's 3-point-something. So maybe it's not. Looks like it's 2.88. And the capital assessment, I believe, is down a little bit from last year, but not hugely.
Yes, it says about $3,000.
Yeah.
Is that the difference from one year?
It may be, because we're up four kids from last year, but, wait a minute, no.
No, it couldn't be.
No, that's the difference between...
I don't know if that's the difference between...
No, I don't either. They didn't go over this page by page for me, so...
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, well, they always come in and give a little more detail.
Yeah, anytime you have questions.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, what we're looking for is...
Assessment?
Yeah.
And the capital assessment.
Yeah. Right. But the capital assessment, and they did say that it was supposed to go down a small amount last year, so...
Yeah, last year was a high.
Yeah. Alright, why don't we, we get a start on things, the Town Management Study Committee, come on down. Yeah, I think that, it helps particularly because you get closer to the mic, so... Does anybody know him?
Good. Beth is not here, she's doing a lot better, she's in Hawaii.
Oh, that's good, we could have held a meeting there.
Yeah, it's been good.
You guys have a travel budget?
Alrighty. We began meeting around the end of August, August 20th, to be exact, and this will sum what we've done so far. I'll run through this page, and then Wayne will talk a little about the longer-range plans. First step was information gathering, and we found a lot of resources. One was the Commonwealth of Massachusetts websites. Found a lot of information there, including a study we got from the town of Douglas about how they went through their whole procedure to hire a town administrator. And we've been looking at other towns' experience. We also met with the Central Mass Regional Planning Council, and the Department of Revenue, and got a lot of good information there. We've talked to a lot of, if not all of, the department heads for the town of Berlin, and we've also talked to other people who would have an influence on this program, mainly to let everybody know what we're doing and get their input. And Wayne and Beth talked with the town of Boylston Town Administrator, and a couple weeks ago, the Rutland Town Administrator came in and met with all of us, and also gave us a lot of information. What have we learned so far? The department heads in general favor adding a town administrator. The benefits include communication between the departments, HR support, budgetary support, grant writing, project oversight. Concerns, cost, even for a town of this size, it's gonna be about $100,000 a year.
Doesn't surprise me.
Town administrator. One is longevity. This is a very transient position. Seems the way they get it increases by moving to another town. And one of the main concerns that people raised was management style. You don't want somebody who's a micromanager, or very authoritarian.
Mm-hmm.
And one thing we do need to do is develop policies. And we talked, just started talking last week about the possibility of having a person come in, maybe for FY19, to just work on HR and policies, not as a town administrator, but as a temporary position to get these in line, assuming we do bring in a town administrator later.
Beyond HR, what policies were you thinking?
I think everything, from performance review policies, to these sexual harassment policies, anything of that nature.
The feedback we had gotten from one of the administrators was just, there was a new position that had been created, and so a good part of their time had been spent gathering policies, getting the information together, because everything had been disparate throughout different departments and things like that, and so, you know, instead of being able to hit the ground running, because that's, information was there, and easily accessible and readily understandable, they spent a lot of time at that type of a rate, you know, being really very administrative on a level that, you know, just discussing there might be opportunities through a grant or something like that, community compact, I think we had talked about possibly, or something like that, we'd heard about, you know, other towns doing that type of work, so we just, what we were saying is that if those opportunities are available, it could be a good, whether this position would be approved or not, it would still be a good thing for the town to have done. And so, but it would lay the good groundwork to help in the, in the future, so...
Yeah, the letter that we received from the state saying we'd satisfied the two parts of the community compact that we signed on for. Central Mass said, you know, perhaps you want to consider signing on again with best practice that might be an analysis of some of your policies, and collation of that material, and then making that available, so that when, if you did go forward with a town administrator, you'd be in the driver's seat.
So you're basically thinking of it like a three-step process, identifying them, gathering them, and then at least doing an initial review of them, okay?
And in some cases, probably creating them.
Right.
Yeah, if need be.
Yeah, I think our decentralized form of government suggests that the policies where they exist probably aren't centrally known, no...
Yeah, no, that's what I said first, identification and gathering is a big part of it.
So that, and, you know, Janet Pierce from CMRPC said, that sounds like an opportunity for a community compact project that would allow you to get it done.
They said the Collins Center, or something like Collins Center, had had resources that were helping other towns do similar things.
Sorry, what center?
EMASS.
EMASS, oh yes, okay.
So, their names come up a number of times through this research of things that they're doing, helping other towns, so...
Okay, one thing we've been strongly advised to do is hire a seasoned town administrator, not someone fresh out of school, someone who's had the experience. Personnel can really consume a town administrator's time. Rutland Town Administrator estimated she spends 60 percent of her time on personnel issues.
And she's been in place for several years, it's not like coming out of the starting blocks, it's just a lot of work and effort.
And does that include things like benefits that are currently handled, sort of by the treasurer and so on?
Yeah.
That includes that, that normally wouldn't go into that block.
Yeah, there was a lot of groundwork, again, that hadn't been laid, so that's been taking that time.
Yeah.
And I think the point is, I mean, you know, the town, we'll have to make recommendations, but ultimately, I think it was just good insight to say if you really want this position, I mean, we've talked a lot, because the town doesn't have an HR person to be handling that now, how time-consuming it can be, so, you know, what's the objective as, you know, we move forward and thinking about this, it's like HR certainly is going to be part of it, and oversight, but it can consume the position to a big chunk of the time, which takes away from other things that, you know, we might have in mind, so...
And, and again, just so I'm clear, by personnel, you mean including things like insurance and benefits, which I'm sure you took a lot of that time, yeah, okay?
Yeah. And one thing we need to do, separate the town administrator's duties and the selecting duties. Like I just heard you talking about the town hall project, that might be something a town administrator should handle, rather than selection.
You mean oversight of the project?
Oversight of the project, right.
No, I think if we're paying somebody $100,000...
Or more.
Or more, yeah, no, no, I, I think you're, you know, you're talking, you know, certainly what, you know, in the vicinity of what we're paying for fire and rescue and police, you know, it's gonna be that order of magnitude.
Yeah.
And those are kind of chimneyed, they're by themselves.
Yes.
We're looking at something that kind of is an umbrella over all things.
Right, absolutely. Not, not obviously with the day-to-day depth that those guys have, but yes, absolutely, I agree.
Okay, so what's next? We want to start getting...
Before you, did you guys have any thoughts, initial thoughts about separating the TA and selectmen's duties?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
We're still interviewing some existing town managers to find out where their background is, and what their situation was, or is.
And is there, are there models, you know, like the strong chief, weak chief?
I think that, you know, what we've seen, and we're not quite at that point yet, but we're getting to that point, and that's part of why we wanted to talk to you today, it's sort of a, I mean, our report's due in February, but we felt, we wanted to sort of give you an interim, like where we're at, and where we sort of see the plan going. But, you know, I think if you look at what we've been reading of job descriptions for the towns, there definitely are patterns, but, so I think part of what we eventually come back with is sort of a, okay, well, this is where we see some of those divisions, so you can sort of see, like, you know, but every town handles it slightly differently.
No, no, that's right.
But I do think that there's similarities with day-to-day stuff, and it does come down to the level of authority that the town...
Delegates, yeah.
To delegate, I mean, we've seen some where towns, the decision-making authority is very tightly still held by the selectmen, so it's very administrative, and in other cases, the administrator's given more powers to act on the board's behalf, so it's more, it's more...
Managerial.
Managerial, and also even being sometimes specific, and, you know, they're able to make certain decisions without having to, you know, but, so it just really depends on, you know, where we think.
Yeah.
But I just think, interesting being here today with Mary being out, I just think it's, it's sort of, it just shows you the lack of backup sometimes there is for things like that, I mean, now it's on you guys to be taking your own minutes and trying to organize it, and had there be somebody like that, they can step in and, and help make sure that flows there, so I think just the redundancies, it's just kind of interesting today that, you know, she's got, she's unable to be here, but if it becomes extended, then it just sort of shows, starts to show the need, I think.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, particularly on this, as you develop things, if, if you could, you know, maybe say, you know, you know, a, if you will, a stronger, you know, town administrator, you know, weak in the middle, that would, I think, help to...
Yeah, because one of the questions we asked...
And what are the variables that, that move it along that continuum, you know?
When we focused with the town managers and department heads and stuff, we really talked about the whole notion of, you know, should this person be able to hire and fire, or should that still remain with the selectmen predominantly, and, you know, that's one issue, the other is...
Did you get any input on that?
Oh, yeah.
There was a...
We'll do that in our report.
And then there was another, the other issue I think that came up a lot was the whole notion of owning the budget, you know, sometimes these town managers, when they term, you know, use that terminology, really control the budgeting process, whereas town administrators frequently are helping to facilitate it, but they're, so there's this, like you said, there's a scale.
Yeah, I think you've hit a couple of the key things that people are gonna be interested in.
As far as hiring and firing, it was about two to one, no, town administrator shouldn't be doing that.
Should not.
Should not have that final say. That, I mean, you know...
At least to start.
And it makes sense.
Yeah.
They make a recommendation, and, yeah.
Yeah, but as far as financial control, maybe that's something different, so, did you have more?
Just a couple of things.
Yeah.
Next step, we want to get some feedback from the town residents. Wayne has put together a survey, and we may probably mention that, we're gonna make a presentation, a short one, at the special town meeting, and follow that up with a public forum a couple days later.
Okay, great.
And then we're gonna continue to gather information from other towns, and along with this, develop the list of duties for the town administrator. And Wayne has got a longer-range plan that I'm gonna let him address.
Yes, I mean, you know, we've been doing all this, you know, understanding so far, and part of this is to sort of explain where we think it's going, because the job description of, you know, what our committee was to do is sort of like left sort of open, but we're looking...
We thought we'd let the town administrator sort it out.
So, so, you know, through November, so again, Bill just mentioned we're gonna, just, the town moderator was nice enough to give us a few minutes to just sort of talk briefly about this committee, what we're doing, and invite people to a public forum, because I think we're at that, we feel we're at that phase now, because that's an important aspect as well. So, I'm gonna continue to be interviewing other town administrators and other towns trying to gather that stuff, but in December, we're gonna, you know, be gathering, I'll give you the, a copy of the survey, and you can certainly give us some feedback on that. The goal is to send that out, at least an invitation out with the census that goes out, and we'll either do it online or on paper, we haven't decided exactly how we'll do that yet. As far as, also in December, you know, having a public forum, and starting to develop the lists of town administrator duties, and looking at, you know, some of these other job descriptions that we were referencing earlier, and starting to figure out where's the line of, you know, what gets delegated. I think that's been sort of the advice that we got from the Division of Local Services, that is, I mean, there's different ways to create this position, there's just adopting the chapter law that's on the books with the state, there's a special act, our passengers' bylaw, special act, so we're, we're starting to coalesce our opinion, I mean, I don't think I'm speaking out of term to say that, you know, we're starting, we're sort of leaning that a special act seems to make sense, because, you know, what, what we've gotten from looking at the process is that if, if the town doesn't do that, I mean, it makes the position weaker, and therefore, subject to the personalities that might be in or out of the selectmen seats, and I think that for the town's benefit, the town needs to define what that role should be.
And that would be true even if it were you established a bylaw?
It's actually weaker, because, because it doesn't seem to be, it's not as, it's easier to, do you understand, way to express that?
Yeah, I mean, I think they really felt it could be manipulated over time fairly easily, as opposed to going through the process with the legislature. So, they said, you know...
And they're seeing more and more towns doing that.
Draw it up the way you want it, enact, get it enacted.
So, you just thought that was...
Because of course, the bylaw would have to be changed at a town meeting, so...
Yeah, but, so...
Yeah, okay.
They're pretty firm on that regard.
Yeah, so, it's the best practice, that they felt that was the way to go.
Okay.
So we're gonna keep developing, you know, through December, the, you know, to try to define the duties better, look at the pros and cons closer, because of the, you know, we're trying to, again, this is part of engaging of the public to try to get a sense for what their concerns are, I mean, no cost is certainly going to be one, but I think we've all learned a lot in this process, and, you know, our, our goal is to sort of educate the public, and the residents as to, you know, why this, you know, we're one of few towns that don't have this type of a position, so, you know, why. So then in January, I think part of our goal is to have more of a group meeting, we've met with town, town administrative officials as individuals, but maybe have more of a forum...
We can call an officers and department heads meeting.
Yeah, to sort of talk more, more about, you know, the position, and start to define some of that more, and then get our report to you in February, you know, and starting to prepare for annual, for the annual town meeting, and being able to present about this. So what we sort of felt was the progression, is that, you know, we didn't feel it would make sense to just go in May and just say, hey, this is a position that we think makes sense, because part of developing a, a special act requires legal, legal development of all that language and everything to make sure, so what we sort of felt would make sense would be to, at the May town meeting, sort of present our research, our findings, you know, make a recommendation, and if there's gonna be feedback, it's better to do it at that time, because we've all been in situations where we've seen articles or whatever be put up there, and then everybody, you know, if they haven't participated in the process, then they start cutting and dicing it, and I think our goal is to not make a position that's as important as this, editable, or being edited at a town meeting. So I think if we present sort of what our vision is for it, and then there may be more feedback, and then that would then get, and then take a vote at that point to approve the concept of the position, or not the concept of the position, but the, I guess the concept, the concept of the position in basically approving an article to say, yes, go forward and develop this language, and then at a, perhaps a special town meeting in the fall, then vote the actual approval of a position.
So if we were gonna then do a position for a special act, in the fall, you'd be doing the authorization for the special act and the dis... doing the authorization for the special act and the description of the position, is that what you're...
Yeah, like in the, in the fall, but at least this would give us an opportunity to get buy-in, I think, in May, and then if there's no buy-in, that sort of answers the question, and if there is, then it still gives an opportunity, it gives an opportunity to further refine it, and if people are starting to voice concerns, questions about where lines are drawn, and where the powers are, is it strong, is it not strong, it gives us the opportunity to incorporate that, so it's, it's a stronger...
I think it makes good sense.
You know, so that's sort of what the rest of this walks through, is, you know, preparing our report, March, really starting to prepare, you know, that article, getting that to you, so we would have that article that would move it toward a special act, and then in April, developing, you know, how we would be talking to town meeting. I just definitely think, you know, we're seeing that there's support, I think, definitely from those that are involved in town government, you know, I think that, you know, we use the term sometimes in our meetings, we've talked about this is akin to a, you know, multimillion-dollar corporation or nonprofit organization that is really running without an administrator, and that would be a scary concept, I think, in the business or, you know, nonprofit world, so I think, you know, we're seeing that, but I still think there's gonna be, we all anticipate, you know, there's concerns of this type of change, but I think it, you know, we're seeing that there's a need, but we certainly wanna be sensitive to everybody, which is why we wanna have the public forum and, and make sure that it's developed with enough opportunity for input, so, so that's sort of our, our plan, and we just wanted to make sure that that development, and, and that was the other reason we were, Bill had mentioned this idea of, you know, if there's opportunities through a community compact to develop some of these things that would help a position like that along, whether it's approved or not, it still gives us the opportunity to do those, because it would create time for funding and things like that, 'cause it probably wouldn't be until the next year, you'd be able to actually get the funding to then fill a position, so...
Okay, so then the article at the May town meeting would be something along the lines of an authorization to prepare, you know, whatever legislative action, you know, is determined, and a position description...
Right.
For approval at a subsequent town meeting.
I mean, it's sort of, I suppose you're, you're asking the body to reauthorize the committees' charge somehow with...
Yeah, and directing them to that production. Yep, yep. Okay. I think that sounds great.
I think so, too. I, I give you a lot of credit for, you need to bring the other people that aren't involved in town government in, and just give them the presentation and make them aware of it.
Yeah, I'll give you the copy of the survey, and this is sort of the goal.
Most of the negatives have been, it's gonna cost us money.
Yeah, that's the one you would expect.
Not how we could save us money.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
I mean, I think, you know, we've talked about, and just to share some of the, you know, they'll all end up being in a report, but I mean, you know, one of the things, you know, people, we've talked about, oh, you know, the possibility of grants, well, that's one of the challenges, say, oh, it's gonna have grants if you bog a position down with HR stuff, there's no time to be doing that type of stuff, or as much, but one of the things that came up, it's like, sometimes it's negative costs or opportunity costs, I mean, if, you know, I mean, we're living in a much more legalistic world, you know, the fact that there isn't maybe the HR oversight, there's other situations, I mean, the fact of avoiding a lawsuit, because we have better management, you know, that could pay for, pay for itself for many years to come, if there's those situations, I mean, those are, it sounds like a negative, and it's not to say that, you know, but those things happen because you can't always be on to, on top of it, but...
There's only one thing that I would suggest, or that you consider that I don't see on the list, which does mean obviously that you didn't consider it, but also to consider the interface between the town manager and the current, you know, administrator for the board of selectmen, you know, that current position.
We have talked about it, and I think that has to...
Particularly when, you know, you get to things like, you know, personnel, if there are things that are more, you know, administrative, and that somebody can do if they have close supervision, you know, I think, you know, that's the sort of thing also to, to consider is the impact that that, that having somebody working here, you know, with daily oversight, et cetera, can do to sort of leverage and rationalize that, you know, that position.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, I think from our conversations, we've definitely seen the two, because there've been some towns where they've approved a position and the selectmen haven't, haven't given up to a support for the town administrator, their, their administrative secretary, so we thought that was kind of an interesting concept, but, so, I don't get that sense from, of what we've spoken with you guys.
Yeah, put somebody who can type if we're not gonna do that.
So, I, so I think that we have talked about it, and I think it wouldn't necessarily be part of a, of the, of the act or legislation.
No, 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 no.
But, but definitely sort of give you that as part of this recommendation, like how the two would function together.
And obviously, you know, that, that impacts the job description, you know, because it's what support they have, what supervision they have, and where they'll have help with respect to certain aspects of, of the job.
Have you talked to other towns about this particular subject?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I mean, I think that the two work together.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's, it's rarer that you've seen ones where they aren't given the support, but I think that there's already, you know, there's two support positions in town right now, one's doing, another is working with the, just, I just never remember the name.
The boards?
The boards, thank you. So, you know, there's that, I mean, there's also the issue of, you know, oversight of clerical staff throughout, there's different, different towns handle it differently, we've heard stories of, you know, because the town, because the position isn't authorized in a way to have oversight over those types of positions, well, they don't, and so they'll see issues and, you know, there's, there's discrepancies or disagreements about, you know, how people are operating, and are they doing a good job and doing the right thing, and there's no, there's no authority there to be able to actually act, so a dysfunctional situation continues, so I think the whole point of this is to make town government, you know, operate more efficiently, you know, and the volunteer, I mean, I think we've all said that the town has been very fortunate to have all the volunteers that it's had in place that are dedicated, many, dedicating many years, but, you know, I think townspeople need to think about the fact that, that, you know, we may not always be so fortunate, and, you know, and you might end up with a situation that you, you end up people, having people through whatever circumstance that don't have the level of experience, and so that's the investment in having potentially a position, so we're seeing it, I think the town officers or employees are seeing that as well, we're, you know, I think a lot of us are hearing it on the street that people support it, but, you know, it's important to make sure that the public understands it, sees it.
No, that's absolutely.
One of the words I'd like to throw in is accountability, you know, with the town manager, I just personally, I see more accountability being spread out because of the development of the human resources, and what the different boards have to do, and there's a central clearinghouse.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that just clarifies a lot of things.
No, I, I agree.
I mean, the financial management, I mean, you know, in some places, you know, they're referred to as the, like, the chief financial officer for the town, I mean, that's part of their role, to really help organize the preparations of budgets and, you know, how those things go, so, you know, so that's what, it needs to be weighed out really specifically.
No, no, I, I totally agree, I mean, we've, we've tried as selectmen to, I think, over the last ten years or so, take, you know, more control over coordinating the budget, but to have somebody who's, who's dedicated to this, and, you know, I'm also cognizant of the fact that, you know, Dennis does a huge amount with respect to benefits and insurance, and that's really, you know, not part of his official job description, he's, you know, stepped up to do that, and, you know, that we're not necessarily gonna have that, that, that piece, and, and man, if, if he didn't do that, I don't know who we'd have do that.
Especially when you're combining that position with a tax collect.
And no, exactly, exactly, so, you know, that's, that's one of the big pieces that's now being taken care of, that I don't think we have any reasonable expectation is gonna stay there very much longer, so...
Yeah, so, you know, I think it's been educating for us, I will say thank you for our, our committee, our committee works really well together.
I've heard that.
It's a, it's a good, it's a good group, so we're accomplishing, I think, a lot in a short period of time, so...
Thank you for your volunteerism.
Yes, indeed, thank you.
So, if you have any, any comments on the survey, after you take a look at it, if you can send all them back to me.
Sure.
We're still, we haven't really met and discussed how it will actually be sent out, but those are the types of questions, but if you see something that you feel is glaring that we haven't thought about, that it might be important to ask, it's sort of not just about the administrative business, but it really comes down to what's the experience of town government, and I think, you know, depending on whether you have or haven't, it might inform your viewpoint, and I think it's important for us to understand how many people feel that way, so, thanks.
Any comments or question, or for the board?
Is this...
Anybody?
Is this going out?
We don't know if it's gonna be...
After your presentation?
It would go out after.
It would probably go in the mailing that Eloise will do with the census.
Which would be at the end of the year.
Yeah, 'cause sometimes it's better to give a little bit of a presentation, so they know.
Oh, yeah, so we, but we're trying to decide if it'll go out in a hard copy, 'cause there's costs to that, if you have to mail to every resident, or if we'll just, you know, mail a no smaller notice, but we're trying to figure out how to do that, just to put any notice in there.
I think about Survey Monkey and just announce the fact that you can go there, and then if you need a hard copy, let us know, and we'll get it to you.
Right. But last week we were talking, I was talking to Eloise about it, and it's like, if we're gonna put a piece of paper in anyways, doesn't make, just put it in, so I don't know, we're trying to figure that out.
Maybe it won't make any difference.
What I'm saying about Survey Monkey is that...
It'll compile the data for you.
It compiles it, yes, I mean...
Yeah, there's a value to that, sure.
See, it's a lot of time, it's always fun to look at adults and say, wow.
You don't wanna have to compile fifteen hundred of news that...
No, I think most people have access to it, so there's a lot of good ways to get the word.
I mean, you may, if you have a draft, or if you have the solid, you may even have it as a handout in your December meeting for people to look at.
It's a good idea. Yeah, you learn a lot, so, so that's where we're at, you'll be hearing more.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you, too.
Thomas, are you liaison with the police department?
That's me.
That's you?
Yep, he's got fire.
I'd like to chat with you sometime.
Okay.
Yeah, we just switched this, you had it right, but we just switched this year.
Oh, shit.
Yeah.
Curveball.
Yeah, we like to mix it up a little bit. And do we have, is the energy committee actually coming in?
They are not coming in, because Judy is in...
That's right, you said that, you said that, sorry.
Oh, she is.
She is, and they were gonna do the, the green communities tonight, but she needs to be here to explain that, 'cause...
'Cause she does?
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it, okay.
Do we have the reviews anywhere that we can access for that last item?
Otherwise, what we can do is vote to, while we're here, we can vote to go with the Board of Health recommendations.
Right.
And I think we'll all, you know, be around a couple of days this week, and people can sign them, so...
Okay.
All right, so I would accept a motion to go with the Board of Health recommendations on theirs, 'cause I think we understand what they are at this point.
Okay.
And then we can dig around and find things and sign them.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any other comments or questions?
No.
Oh, I think that just was our answer to...
Yes.
From them, for the question we asked. Okay, so, hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a letter going to National Grid requesting inventory values and contractual arrangements that would be necessary for the town to purchase existing streetlights, this is with the, you know, this is for us to be able to assess the financial impact of that, and opens, if I understand things correctly, opens the ability to get LED lights and not be really at the mercy of National Grid.
This is the first step to getting to potentially LED lights.
And this is just info...
Is this from the Energy Committee?
It's from the Energy Committee.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Yes, I hadn't seen it, but, all right.
Yeah, and I had...
I did put a copy over there for you, too, so...
I'd read, I mean, it is just asking for information.
It doesn't commit us to anything, it's really just, it may not have National Grid give us the, the worth of the existing lights and how much it would cost us to buy them back, and it will freeze that number for two months, so they won't depreciate for two months.
All right.
Okay.
But this is, I guess, the longest part of the process, so they wanted to get this started.
All right.
So I would accept a motion to approve executing this letter?
So moved.
Second.
Any further comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Executed stuff over here, all right. Then any other selectmen updates? We had yours from Asta, but...
Yeah, I just, I don't know if you saw the email, but Representative Notton called today, and our legislation has passed the House.
Passed the House, mm-hmm.
And he has referred it to Senator Chandler to try to get her to move it through...
The Senate.
The Senate.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's our combination treasurer-collector, okay? Anything else?
I did, I did talk to Julie Lee from the Recreation Committee, just to give her some information on applying for the mitigation grant, and had a nice conversation, they are interested in putting in a walking path, I guess, around South Common, would be almost a mile, would be strictly on the South Common side, not to go behind the school.
Mm-hmm.
So I just gave her the dates and the information for that.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I can't think of anything else right now.
You just need to get your signature on the warrant, then, when we figure out how